How about this? Two town meeting talk shows in a row. Can you believe it? I don't remember the last time this has happened, actually. But we're starting off the year busy. Yesterday, in this time slot, we learned about what it meant for Prince William Sound to be designated a Mission Blue Hope Spot. And if that show's not up on our YouTube channel already, it will be soon. All of our shows that we do here, of course, are moved to that archive after they have been on the air. They get recorded and are available on demand. And that will be the case for this one as well, as we visit with two guests about the Community Coastal Experience. Our show, by the way, again brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications, your local provider of wireless data services and cell phones. Do we still get to call them cell phones or are they mobile devices? I don't know. But they're your local provider of that service and also your local provider of your local talk show here on KLAM, so we can share information like we're about to today. And I will confess that I had no idea what I was getting into when I started visiting with these guests and became increasingly amazed as the conversation involved at just how robust a program this Community Coastal Experience is. Going to be speaking with Misha Clausen, who has a statewide role in putting this together, and then Christina Rio from the Prince William Sound Science Center, who kind of focuses on the Cordova portion of this multi-community experience. And there may very well be a lot of you that have heard of this before, and obviously there are Cordovans, as we learn in the show, that have participated in this. But it is, it's very, very different than, you know, from what I thought, just giving it a cursory reading. It'd teach me, I really should prepare for shows more. As it turns out, I didn't really have time when we set this up, so I just sort of jumped in and was like, "All right, introduce yourselves and tell us about this thing." And the more they talked about it, it was amazing, you know. You not only get to participate, but they actually give you a stipend to cover expenses and you travel all over the place and get a very rich Alaskan learning experience. So we're going to learn about that, the Cordova Coastal Experience, with Christina Rio and Misha Clausen on today's Town Meeting, brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications. So let's get to know the both of you first, and Christina, we'll start, we'll start with you. What is your, what is your position and what is your affiliation with this subject of the Community Coastal Experience?
Hi JR, thanks for having me. I'm with the Prince William Sound Science Center. I'm an education specialist. And my involvement with the Community Coastal Experience is I am heavily involved in the planning and coordinating of the Cordova part of the experience. This is a five-week experience over four different parts of the oil spill-affected region, the Exxon Valdez oil spill. And so Cordova, we spend about a week in Cordova, and I am involved in the coordination of their time here.
Okay, and then Misha, how about you? Where are you and what is your background with all of this?
Yeah, so I'm in Homer, Alaska, at the Center for Alaskan Coastal Studies. And I'm an educator and internship program coordinator here. And my role with this program is to coordinate it and make sure that, you know, that we are able to connect participants and knowledge bearers throughout the region and make this a really fulfilling experience for everyone.
Good. Okay, well, Misha, we'll stay with you because you, as I understand it, you have a little bit more of a role in terms of the program broadly, whereas Christina is, her work is specific to Cordova and how Cordova fits into the larger scheme. So what is the Cordova, and this is, this is the part that intrigued me, you know, why I reached out to you guys, is, is when I got the email about it, it just seemed like a kind of a fascinating thing that I hadn't heard of before. So what is the Cordova Coastal, or I'm sorry, the Community Coastal Experience?
Yeah, so it's sort of an internship program for local adults, so adults from South Central Alaska coastal regions. And the idea of the program is to connect local people with science organizations and cultural organizations that all have the intention of sort of sustaining our natural resources that come from coastal regions. And so the program is funded by the Exxon Valdez Oil Spill Trustee Council. And the focus is on EVOs-funded science research, as well as other research and cultural practices that involve resources from the, from the EVOs region. So we have the intention of bringing people together from different coastal communities around the region to share the knowledge that they have about these resources. So participants come in with their own experiences and travel between areas throughout the EVOs region, like meeting with different organizations and different individuals and gain knowledge about science, about culture, about all things natural resources. And yeah, it's a, it's a knowledge sharing program.
Good. And so as they, as people participate in this, what would you say they sort of come away with? Because you're, you're looking for people, and we'll get into the specifics, but kind of looking for people for, from people for a different backgrounds, different experience they, they bring to it. What do they take away? What would you say they, they learn or what kind of a sense do they get from it?
Yeah, so one of the things that people take away is, is connections with organizations who offer career opportunities, trainings, workshops, education programs, internships. So participants are people who are interested in learning about these things, but then also potentially, you know, a career shift or gaining networking and gaining connections with people throughout the region that then they can potentially connect with, you know, later after the program for these opportunities. There are also participants, in last year's program, we had participants who, you know, already had their career, already knew what they were doing, but they're very involved in their communities, whether it's through education, volunteering, media, you know, making and sharing film and video. And so they were able to come away with a lot more knowledge about different programs that are going on throughout the region than they could bring back to their communities.
Okay, and Christina, as you hear Misha talking, again, her focus is on the program more broadly. Your role is more specific to Cordova. You know, what do you, what would you add maybe, if anything, to what she said?
I'd love to add a story from last year. One of our participants, he actually gained so much knowledge from this experience that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service hired him to be a part of their team. And it was, he said to us that it was his time in Cordova, working with, you know, Alaska Department of Fish and Game, that gained, he gained that experience to get that job. So they gained a lot of skills, a diverse skill set from this experience that they can apply to many different positions in the future.
Good. All right, well, and, and, you know, coastal is obviously what we're all about here. And so in terms, Misha, back to you of the, the goals or intentions, just so those, so we're clear on those. Did you kind of cover those already, or is, is there, would you have a more specific response to that question? The goals and intentions of the experience?
Yeah, I suppose we talked about it a little. I guess something that I would add is that, you know, as communities in South Central Alaska, we, we do tend to, science organizations and other, you know, we're an environmental education organization here in Homer. We tend to attract a lot of folks from other places, like from the Lower Forty-Eight, you know, kids just getting out of college are interested in coming to Alaska to participate in the science or outdoor education or, you know, learn about this, this place and these resources. Maybe they're coming up for, to work in fisheries. And, you know, this, this program was created because of the barriers that local people face when trying to get into those roles as well. And there's like, sort of a competition of, well, all these people are coming from out of state and, and they get to participate in these opportunities, when really we have a lot of local adults who have knowledge and oftentimes, you know, traditional and generational knowledge about this region that they can bring to our organizations, you know, whether that's through, you know, interning or, you know, being staff with our organizations or just being part of the community and part of the conversation around resource sustainability in these coastal regions. So the intention is to, you know, provide those opportunities for local people, but also increase our ability as, as organizations throughout the EVOs region to support and encourage the participation of local people in all of our programming, training, staff.
Okay. Anything to add to that, Christina?
No, Misha hit the nail on the head with that one.
All right, well, this is probably going to be pretty easy for you then, so. All right, now I've heard, Misha, you've mentioned the word adult a number of times. So what is your, what kind of an age range are you looking for?
Yeah, so the program is open to anyone 18 and older. We, this last year, we had folks who were still in college. We had folks who were, you know, later in life in their careers and sort of everywhere in between. So there's no age, age limit there, just, you know, 18 and older for mostly for legal reasons and places we're staying, things like that.
Is there somebody in particular you're, you're, you're looking to attract? Do you have an ideal participant sort of in mind?
Yeah, so participants, we, what we'd really like is to have, and this was the case last year, a diversity of participants who come from different backgrounds and different locations throughout the region. So, you know, anywhere from Alaska Peninsula, Kodiak, and then to, you know, Kenai Peninsula, Prince William Sound, all of these regions. And then the, the one thing that we do want all participants to come with is just an interest in, in advocating for the sustainability and health and care for the resources of, of the coast. And so we definitely encourage participants who are Alaska native or who have family, you know, ties to coastal regions and coastal resources to, to apply.
Okay, and Christina, in terms of, again, making it more specific to Cordova, what are the, some of the different types of Cordovans, you know, in our various industries and cultures and communities that you would say you would like to see in a group?
Yeah, that's a great question. I would love to see someone from the fishing community apply. That's, you know, a really big part of Cordova, and it would be so valuable for them to gain the insight that we're providing with the Community Coastal Experience. And then take that and share that with other members of the fishing community. So that would be really cool to see. I also encourage our local native people to get involved. That would be just such a rich experience to get to experience other cultures from the region.
Okay, I'm curious now, what are, what are some of the, and Misha, we'll go back to you for this. What are some of the typical activities that somebody participates in? Do you move around? Are you going places? Is it largely virtual? What's, how does, what, if somebody participates in this, what kind of time is involved? And are they going to be traveling? And just sort of overall, what are the activities involved?
Yeah, sort of what to expect. So participants will be traveling a lot. We do a lot of moving from place to place. All of our activities are very hands-on. So, and place to place, as in, we're traveling to Kodiak, Seward, and Catch Mac Bay, so Homer, Soldovia, possibly other, other locations within these, these regions too, kind of like moving around. And then, of course, Cordova and Prince William Sound. So in each of these locations, we are meeting with field scientists, so doing a lot of field research shadowing, you know, gearing up and, and getting out in, in the water, on boats, on rivers. We are doing a lot of like coastal intertidal monitoring here in Catch Mac Bay. It's sort of, I've heard it described as like a science sampler. So we get to kind of meet with these different researchers and sample, okay, what, what would it, what does it look like when we go out and do this monitoring? And there are two things that participants could get out of those experiences. So one would be making connections with researchers that they might want to study with or, you know, talk to about creating a, an education program based on their work, something like that. And then the other one is gaining knowledge on how, how this type, you know, research is conducted and, and data is collected and so that folks could go back to their home communities and, you know, launch a similar type of data collection program. So that's one of the activities that we spend a lot of time doing. Another one is meeting with indigenous and traditional knowledge bearers and doing cultural, learning cultural activities, arts games, talking about traditional uses of, of plants, subsistence harvest. We, you know, we'll, we'll make a lot of community meals together over the five weeks of the program and, you know, do a lot of, you know, talking about what sort of resources are available to harvest. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of storytelling and downtime as well, where some of that, that knowledge is really shared and connections are made. So lots of, lots of meeting with community members and, you know, sharing meals and, and sharing stories.
Yeah, it's, it's like networking, but with more of a heart, kind of sounds like. As far as what happens, Christina, in Cordova, what are, what are some of the typical things when it's Cordova's turn to, to host or be where everybody comes? What, what are some things that happen?
Yeah, we try to expose the participants to some of the science we're doing here at the Science Center. So in the past, Dr. Rob Campbell has taken them out on a research cruise, and we've done a plankton tow and then brought the plankton back to the Science Center and looked at them under the microscope with Jessica Pretty, and she's helped us to identify them. We also like to meet with our partners and expose them to different types of jobs. So we've met with Alaska Department of Fish and Game, the U.S. Forest Service, the Copper River Watershed Project, and each, with each organization, they've learned something different. When we met with the Watershed Project, they learned about culverts and, you know, everything from how to build them, how to put them in, why we put them in. When we met with the Department of Fish and Game, they learned about fish sampling and how they set their quotas, odorless sampling, age, sex, and length sampling. When we met with the U.S. Forest Service, we did Dusky Canada Goose Nest Monitoring, and we went out into the field and we monitored a nest ourselves and learned what they look for. So we try to expose them to a diverse skill set.
Wow. And, and Misha, back to you, how would somebody apply for this? We talked about who you're, who you're kind of looking for, the people that are going to add the most and get the most out of it. If, if somebody is saying, "Yeah, that kind of sounds like me," how do they go about becoming a participant?
Yeah, so real quick, I just want to add to what Christina said as well. Just last year in Cordova, we did, obviously, it was, as you can tell, it was a packed, full experience there. And one of our partners is Chugatch Regional Resources Commission, who, there are some wonderful members of CIRC in Cordova. And we were able to meet, the group was able to meet with Brooke Mallory to learn more about the native history of Cordova and also go on a plant walk with Raven Cunningham from CIRC. And I just know that those two experiences were really powerful and important to the group last year. And so we're really trying to focus on connecting folks with that traditional knowledge that's, that comes from the region.
Yeah, so not just the science, not, you know, but like we said, more, more about the, the cultural connection and learning about some of the similarities and differences, just kind of between how people in the region live and how they have lived in some cases for thousands of years. So, so again, if somebody wants to apply, how's that work?
Yeah, yeah, so we, in Cordova, they can come to the Prince William Sound Science Center, and folks there have applications available. But it's also really easy to apply online. So if you go to akcoastalistudies.org, under our internship section, there's a page there, or you can actually type in, we made it a shortened, it's tinyurl.com/ce-info. And you can apply that way. And then you might also see flyers around your community with a QR code that links to the application. You can also just search Community Coastal Experience, Coast, Alaska Coastal Center for Alaskan Coastal Studies, and it'll, it'll come up.
And anybody who sees, who decides to partake of our archived online YouTube version of this experience will have links down there because my son told me it's good to put in links, and I've learned all about that over the last few years. Is this, you talked about a lot of travel, which has a fiscal note obviously attached to it. First of all, are your participants, do they, do they need to kick in for, for that? Or do you have that covered? Are the participants paid? How does, how does the monetary part of it work, Misha?
Yeah, so an important part of this program, you know, in trying to encourage local participants and to remove some of those barriers to access opportunities like this. Participants are paid, so there's a $3,000 stipend for participation in the five-week program. And travel, lodging, and food are all included, separate from that stipend. Those are all costs that are covered by our grant.
Wow, okay. And in terms of moving everybody in around and that stuff, is that also covered then?
Yeah, so we've got travel by ferry, plane, van, you name it, throughout the program.
Yeah, and I guess as I review the initial letter that you, you guys sent me, June 3rd to July 6th, is, is somebody making a, basically making a commitment to step away from normal life sort of at that point? They'll be involved in this for that, that whole period, or do they kind of step in and out?
Yeah, good question. So it is a, quite a commitment. So folks, yeah, so folks who are able to take, you know, five weeks off of work or, you know, maybe it's the end of the school year, so, yeah, are eligible to participate, yeah.
Yeah, like when I went to Europe junior year. It's not like I got to pop that home in between countries where we're out there and we're together. And I, you know, I would think that a lot of bonding would actually go on between the participants, just not the communities that you connect with. But this group of people's got to get to know each other pretty well. Have you, have you seen that happen, Christina, over the times you've observed?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, when they came to Cordova last year, they were already on week three, and you could see the, the tight-knit bonds that had already formed. And Misha was with them the whole time, and she got to see those grow over time.
Yeah, you're like, you're like the, the main tour guide, Misha, when they, you know, when they come up, although you have a little bit more to share than, than trinket shops. So have, I mean, have you seen some pretty special relationships come from this between your participants?
Yes, absolutely. I feel very grateful for the opportunity to have this, this role and to get to, to get to know all of them as individuals and also to like watch that group grow and bond and, and connect and see what, you know, experiences folks have in common who come from different communities and villages throughout the region and yet have this like shared connection to the land and the coastal resources. And just watching that bond and that connection form is really wonderful. And yeah, I've, I've been able to, you know, stay in touch with everyone who participated last year, and we're actually having a little online Zoom reunion next week. It'll mark six months since the start of our program last year. So yeah, it's, it's always great to continue to hear about how folks are, are connecting with each other and connecting with different individuals and organizations that we met during the program too.
Yeah.
Seeing that lasting.
Now, you mentioned the eating is part, is a very important part of the logistics and experience the different communities traditions or cuisine in that regard. Where does everybody stay? Do they, do they do homestays with families? Or stay with a facility or be, are they in hotels? Or how's that work?
It's a bit of a shorgish board of lodging. So in some of the locations, we do have hotels because it seems like the easiest way to access all the different, you know, location, like in Kodiak, for example, we are visiting lots of different buildings and organizations and places. And so we have this like kind of centralized location. And then in other places, like in Catch Mac Bay, we'll be camping, we'll be staying in yurts across the bay, we'll be staying at a research lab, kind of different things. Christina, do you want to speak to the Cordova lodging?
She read my mind.
Last year, we had the participants stay at the Prince William Sound Science Center campground. And this year, we're trying to get them to stay at the Science Center bunkhouse. So a little bit more elaborate.
Okay, good. Well, and I mean, that just, it just, the more I learn about this, it seems, it seems like, you know, it's a learning experience, but it's really an adventure in a lot of ways. You get to experience things at, at a lot of different levels. And obviously, it doesn't only happen in Cordova. Maybe run down again, all the, Misha, all the different places that, that are included in this, what? I guess it's four or five weeks?
Yes, five weeks of travel. So we'll start in Catch Mac Bay in Homer, we'll go across the bay to Peterson Bay and Kusitzena Bay, and then, and Soldovia, and then we'll go to Seward, Kachukich, and there we'll probably stay in a hotel as well. And last year, we spent the weekend in Moose Pass and then flew out to Cordova from Anchorage, spend a week there. And then we actually came back to Homer for a weekend, and then we took the ferry to Kodiak, spend a week there, and then back to Catch Mac Bay for our final, fifth week to kind of close things out. So yes, lots of travel, lots of adventure. We definitely, you know, when people apply and, and we start the, we do an interview while we're accepting applicants. And we always, we make sure to let people know, you know, just what they're getting themselves into. And they're definitely, there are definitely folks who are like, "I actually don't want to camp in the rain for a week."
Aw, come on. All right, and so what, when is, Christina, when, when is the Cordova portion of this, do you think, in the midst of the, of the, this time period?
Yeah, we're tentatively planning for June 17th to the 21st. And I say tentatively because we're waiting for the release of ferry schedules for the summer. And so our dates could shift a little bit, but it will be around then.
Well, I can always kayak from Homer or whatever. That'd be something to put on the resume. Okay, good. Well, and, and people could hopefully even take in a Cordova Little League baseball game as part of their cultural experience. So Misha, you mentioned the primary funding for this is EVOs, is that right?
Yeah.
And is that the only source, or does it come from other places too?
That is the, as far as I know, that is the only source of funding is EVOs.
All right, and, and as far as local organizations and community members that end up being part of this experience, then do you, do you have all the connections that you need? Or are you looking for more? And how would that work, you know, if somebody would like to be involved?
Yeah, we're definitely looking for more. You know, we, we have some organizations that we're connected with, but definitely trying to connect like as many interested members of the community as possible. So really, we're in the planning process for this next year, and there's a lot of space to bring in different knowledge bearers from, you know, around Cordova, around the region. We do have travel stipends for folks that, you know, have a hard time getting to the, to the location. And yeah, looking to connect with scientists, with cultural knowledge bearers, anyone who wants to lead activities, give presentations, you know, teach related skills to the participants, anything like that.
Okay, on the Cordova side of things, Christina, anything to add to, to that in terms of local organizations or people that, given what they have to offer as Cordovans that you'd like to have reach out, maybe join up?
Yeah, absolutely. So as Misha mentioned, we worked with, you know, Chugatch Regional Resources Commission last year, but we're trying to increase the amount of cultural organizations involved because it's not just about the science, it's also about the culture of the area. And so we'd love to have the Native Village of Iac, where the Alonka Cultural Center, reach out and join in on this experience.
Okay. Well, it's, like I say, it's, it's even more fascinating after visiting with you about it. I mean, it reminds me of a lot of, and of course, the goal is, is, would be different, but, but this sort of, this rise of experience-based, connection-based tourism, you know, being, being a visitor, when you go to a place connection-based tourism, you know, being, being a visitor, when you go to a place, you don't go to just consume and ride a roller coaster and, and, you know, go, go to the fair, basically. I mean, you, you really connect with people, you learn in a lot of ways. It's like what the Chamber of Commerce has been talking about, where you really seek to leave the community better than it was before you came, through your connections and, and your interest. And this, this seems to fit very much uh, with that, with, you know, again, all of this other, all of this other knowledge that's baked into it. Is there anything that we, Misha, maybe do you, as we kind of wind down here, that, that, that you want to add before we, before we wrap up? Anything we missed, or anything that's occurred to you as far as more interesting experiences people can look forward to?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I think what you just said is really important. Um, that, you know, instead of people kind of traveling around and just, you know, gaining this knowledge from scientists, or gaining this knowledge from um, culture bearers, it's, it is about co-learning and about creating um, creating the conversation and knowledge around um, around these resources and around the future of these resources together. And um, just acknowledging that, that um, you know, we, we all have something to bring. And so um, really creating, we'd like to create a community of co-learning um, as we travel around to, to each of these locations. And um, there's a lot to be, a lot to be gained from.
Sure, sure. And Christina, maybe last word. Do you um, you know, in, in terms of, I mean, you shared that great story of how this experience actually launched somebody into, into a career. Uh, any, any final thoughts about the value uh, from a Cordova perspective, again, of, of participating in this and, and, and the value to somebody who decides to join up?
Yeah. Um, we have a lot of opportunities here in Cordova. We're very, um, very lucky to be in a place with so many opportunities. Um, however, sometimes it can be hard to get started in certain fields. And so this experience will get you that baseline of knowledge to get you to the job that you want. And not only um, a baseline of knowledge to start a job in Cordova, but also um, anywhere throughout Alaska, because you're going to be traveling through these five different communities and learning different skillsets that Cordova can't offer. Um, so it's very, very valuable. And to any participant who um, or potential participant who is nervous about the amount of travel or time commitment, just know that you have your, you, we try to give you your weekends off, and we try to end early enough so that you can have that um, relax and reset time and time alone, um, so that you can um, come into every day with a fresh mindset.
Okay. I think any introverts that were thinking about uh, joining up, I think you just put them at ease. Well, thanks very much to the both of you. This has been a fascinating discussion. AKCoastalStudies.org, if I got the website right, that's, that's going to be a good resource. We'll put others in the, in the description of this video uh, once it, I mean, it's not a video, obviously, on the radio, but in our archive, when it goes there for people to listen to who maybe missed it on the radio, or uh, or want to, or who heard it on the radio and think, hey, so I know so-and-so should really listen to this, which is, of course, why we do that. Um, and, and so we'll, we'll have links down in there and more information. And if I understand, again, the Prince William Sound Science Center, Christina, is the primary point of contact for any Cordovans interested in this, is that right?
Absolutely. We have applications at the Science Center. You can call and ask any questions. I'll be available to answer them. Just let us know what you need.
Okay. Well, again, uh, nice, very nice to meet the both of you. I wish you all do success, and uh, thanks for letting us participate here. I hope you'll keep in touch if there's anything else you need to have us get out there. We can always do this again.
Great. Thank you, JR.
Wonderful. Nice to meet you, JR.
Well, if you haven't heard of this program before, I hope you, like I, found this to be a remarkable experience, learning about this. The Cordova, nah, I keep wanting to shove the word Cordova in it. Cordova's involved, but it's called the Community Coastal Experience. And our thanks again to Christina Rio and Misha Clausen for all the details. If you joined us, by the way, mid-program, or you heard the program and can think of somebody else that might benefit from hearing it, I will be getting it up to the YouTube channel as soon as possible. Also remember the AKCoastalStudies.org website, where you can find more information. And again, it sounded like Christina was happy to hear from you over there at the Science Center, if you want to talk to somebody local about this. But a pretty amazing program to go to all these places, actually get paid to do it, and your travel is covered. And I mean, if I had a month to take off of my regular life, I would uh, I'd be very tempted to jump it. I don't know if I'm intelligent enough to do something like this, but I would want to become intelligent enough. Big thanks to our sponsor, Cordova Wireless Communications, for making this program possible, the town meeting talk show. And a big thanks to all the money that they bring into the community, millions of dollars every year that we don't have to do anything to generate, other than just do business with both CTC and Cordova Wireless. All the other special programming to which you are entitled will be coming up in condensed form, so we don't miss out on any of the brain food. Again, this program will go to youtube.com/CordovaTV for listening on demand. If you ever have any ideas for one of these programs, we're more than happy to have you as a guest, or seek out a guest that you recommend, any of that kind of thing. So just let me know. And we hope you have a great rest of your Thursday. Thanks for tuning in.